The closeness of the existing roundabout and the traffic fare because you've got two ramps as well as a, as you would describe, road coming into it, in Oakwoods itself. So you've really got five points on that, that roundabout already. And it's just, there's very tight because of any kind of backup in traffic. That's where it creates you problems.
Well, thinking in terms of on the side where Executive Drive and Call Street is located, I don't really know that there's a need for South Bridge Street to have a roundabout just because of the lack of traffic coming out of and going on to South Bridge Street. But I think I understand your logic for why you want to put it there. But with that said, is it impractical to ask for consideration to have a service road on that side of the street where as you come out of Executive Drive, you could turn left to go to Call Street and let the service road intersect with Call Street so that the traffic that wants to go back into Wilkesboro or North Wilkesboro could enter onto the roundabout and it would be a very simple process to connect the service road to Call Street and then to be able to turn left by going on the roundabout? Does that have any practical application in your minds?
There's five houses that would have to be taken.
Yeah. But...
We had one, but she's still falling back now.
Say that again.
We practically have a service road that we built just a few years ago that connects to Courthouse Drive up to Executive Drive that could serve as that connection to the roundabout.
And where is that?
Right off of Call Street.
Okay.
It's an extension by the Courthouse Drive up to Executive Drive.
Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, that's the existing connector. So, once again, back to my question, would it be impractical to bring it up closer to Oakwoods Road?
We just have to really look at it, see what kind of impact. I mean, fortunately, the building sits a little farther back there, so that, that helps somewhat in case. But we still need to really just have to see because you don't want to create any internal flow problems too, especially like when classes are something letting out over there. So we'd want to, maybe we could take a look at that.
So which side of Oakwoods Road is the sidewalk going to be on?
West side.
West side. So is that, would not occupy the same space as the service road? And it would probably displace the sidewalk? And that would require another five feet? Could you have a service road that would be a one-way out of Executive Drive?
I don't see it practical from where it's at.
Okay, all right. So I'm just basically throwing out a hypothesis that has no merit.
With the take of the housing through there, I don't see it when you have the access on the backside.
Yeah. Well, Remi, the only reason I say that, now that you've clarified that the sidewalk will be on the same side as the service road would be, you've got also four feet in addition to that, so you're going to come off the curb line nine feet. So it's going to infringe on those three houses anyway. And it's probably going to make those residential houses a lot less desirable to live in because of feeling squeezed. So that's why I thought that a service road would be a good option on that side to accommodate perhaps what a lot of people are here for tonight, to explore options to be able to do a left out.
We'll still look at it.
All right, great. All right, I've exhausted my questions. Any other questions from the council at this time? Okay, this isn't really a public hearing on this, but I'm going to turn it somewhat into one. But I'm going to ask anyone that would like to come before the council and the two members of DOT to come to the podium. And we will put a microphone on the podium. I will ask two things, to identify who you are, and are you with either the Board of Trustees of the Community College or the Endowment Board? Or if you're a resident that have properties in adjacency to Oakwoods Road so that we could get a good bearing of why you're here? And then please limit your comments or questions to three minutes. I hope we won't have everyone in the audience wanting to ask questions. But in to expedite the time, I would like to say three minutes will be the limit. I'm going to ask a town clerk to start the stopwatch as soon as you start speaking into the mic. So at this time, if I could have a show of hands, I'll start calling people up to either ask questions or make comments. All right, Marty, you want to come first?
Fire away.
Identify who you are.
Okay, my name is Marty Coon. We are a shareholder, I guess you would say, of the first property on the right as you go into Executive Drive. And we also are the owner of a couple of lots as you go back, also right there. So that's the, that's the purpose of our vested interest. But anyway, several comments. The website says there are 5,500 cars, and you guys, I think, put in 5,900 presently that use Oakwoods Road. I've been involved in, in traffic matters for, for quite a few years, and that's, that's not much traffic. I think you were projecting 7,000, I believe is what you said. Yeah, so I can't imagine that the driving force to spend money there is that we have a problem with the road system because there's problems worse than that one anywhere you want to look. So I can only assume that it's because of town request over time to try to bring, you know, the gateway, I believe is the term, into the towns because this, this drive doesn't go by Tyson, so it doesn't have the eyesore at. So, and I get that. And I understand at one time this was a multi-lane road at stoplights, you may be even...
Four lanes.
Okay, even dressed up, you know, lighting, et cetera, et cetera, and that costs too much, you know, from your points of view. So now we have, you know, what, what we're talking about here. Yes. So I'm assuming, you know, if, if you guys are part of the driving factor that wants this, because I've asked Ken if there's any traffic data or safety concerns, and, and he indicated to me, and I am unaware of there being any safety, you know, issues existing on that road at this point in time, other than the fact that Executive Drive and the service station drive don't exactly line up right, you know. But, but, you know, that's, you know, just sort of the way it is. But Executive Drive has got a ton of, of private and public investment in it already. It's, it's been the revitalization of something that was an eyesore. And, you know, it's, it blows my mind how that becomes the right in, right out. And Bridge Street's got full access essentially. I mean, that's just, you know, it's idiotic. Now, I heard your idea about taking, you know, the Bridge Street roundabout and putting it in Executive Drive, and if we could get that, you know, I'd shut up. You know, hopefully, you know, some of these other folks would shut up because that's a form of full access. It's not great, but it's a form.
All right. That's all right, just keep going.
Okay, I'll try to hustle.
I've got the gavel. I'll stop you when I need to.
Beyond the private investment and beyond the public investment, emergency services exist on Executive Drive today. Executive Drive has land that's owned by multiple, you know, people, some public, some private, some quasi, you know, public, I guess, that have pad-ready sites. And there's been scuttlebutt about additional emergency services needing to find new locations. A logical thing would be to put them on pad-ready sites, not to mention the fact that down where the sheriff's office is, there's already extra land down there that's pad-ready. So it's very logical with the access to 421, at least that used to be, that new emergency services, you know, would, would sit down where the sheriff's department is. Makes sense, you know, a lot of sense. Well, limited access and emergency services don't go together. So, you know, the sheriff's department had, we, you talked about a leftover. Well, that's a left end. If the sheriff's, sheriff's department needs to go to town under the current plan, even with the leftover, you know, they go out and they run down here and turn around, they run back this way, and, and you lose time. Is that a lawsuit waiting to happen? If I'm the one that's damaged, it is, you know, because I think that is a faulty design when it comes to emergency services. Anyway, I'll, I'll probably, I'll close with this. A roundabout in Executive Drive would solve the non-aligned drives of us and our neighbors across the street. You know, we are the commercial traffic, but, you know, there, I think we're the highest traffic. I'm sure the courthouse has some, but some of it comes through us. Yeah, I think some problems that exist today, you know, that aren't accident problems, but it is people trying to turn left into the convenience store that, you know, sometimes conflicts with people turning left as it's currently signed to go into Executive Drive. But a roundabout there would solve that. I understand it's close, you know, but the one on the other side of the bridge is close too, you know. So if that's okay, let's have some more. You know, and with that, at least the sheriff could make the slow left, you know, as he came out, which is better than no left. Thanks for your time.
And I'll add this to what Marty said. I heard you say that the deterrent would be the stacking effect, but I'd much rather have a stacking effect that we'd have to deal with than the potential problem we're going to have if we don't have the opportunity to have a, a left out or a roundabout that would navigate the same objective in being able to, within a very short radius, to turn back left. So we will now move on. Do we have other speakers that would like to come before the town council for the council? And Bill Warden, would you come forward, please? Chris, did you raise your hand? Okay, hold that, and I'll call on you next.
My name is Bill Warden. I'm a member of the Community College Foundation Board, and I also travel that street from home to town all the time. I would encourage you to keep looking at that left end because if you think about it, people traveling 421 to come to Herring Hall or to Marty's building, that's the logical move intuitively to understand it. I understand your concerns about the left out. The left end, though, I think can be pretty safe for a long time. And plus, if you think about people who are coming from town or the north side of county, they come in, make a right in, they'll know about the back way out and come back out. So I think that left end makes a lot of sense if you can't work out these other issues. And I'm just speaking as one member of the foundation board. There hasn't been a meeting, we haven't taken a position or anything. The other comment I'll make is, gosh, I spent a lot of years following those, traveling, looking at locations and traffic and everything else. I echo what Marty said, that's not a big traffic number. And four roundabouts in that length of time, it strikes me as too much. I mean, it just intuitively, it doesn't feel good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Sheriff, if you would come front and center. And once again, I'll say this while Chris is taking the mic. I certainly appreciate everyone coming out tonight to listen to this discussion. And anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment tonight or ask a question, feel free to raise your hand to, to come forward. So Chris, thank you for coming, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mike. Michelle for coming. I'd just like to express my concerns. They are the restriction of emergency services out to be able to get over to North Wilkesboro and the access that we would have to other areas. And with the two lots down there, we don't know what's going to be down there. That's the two lots that are currently for sale. We don't know what's going to be. We don't know where it'll be. The EMS, I understand that they are looking to put a new emergency services or a emergency medical service base. It's going to be either there near College Street or with County on some property or somewhere in that area. That's also going to be restrictive for them. Roundabouts are just intersections is what they are. And statistically, as a law enforcement officer, these fellows right here tell you that are currently here, that that's where you have accidents, is at intersections. And I feel like that is way too many roundabouts. I don't like the one we have now because I feel like that it's, it's a restriction. The traffic's backed up, and I didn't notice that until we had that roundabout. So with that, that, that's my concerns, and I hope we can reach a better objective.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you. Bill?
My name's Bill Davis, and I'm a trustee at the college. I'm also a supervisor for the Wilkes Soil and Water Conservation District. I have two comments, and I'll make them quickly. One is that when we think about the community college and with our health, all of our allied health programs over there, we have a lot of students that are coming. A great number of those students are going to be traveling 421. Of course, as from what I'm hearing here, we want lesser of those coming through town. And it looks like that, you know, that, that I am here to say that access with a left turn of some sort or either a roundabout would serve the college and the farming community very well. When we think about the impact that it has on the farming community, we brag and talk about and very pleased when we say that that is the biggest part of our whole economy is agriculture. All the farmers touch base with our new ag center we have over there. They come to get advice, they come to sign up, to get help for conservation reasons and for other reasons too, and that I feel like that we really are not taking into consideration maybe enough for the number of people that are going to be coming there. The new ag center, we have had it long enough to even see how many people will be coming, but a lot of people are using that. And then I certainly know, being a former employee at Wilkes Community College, that the traveling distance of our students many times is a long ways, and the shorter we can make that, the better it is for them. And I hope that somehow that this can be resolved so that, that we can have better access for emergency services, for the ag community there at the ag center, which is right beside the sheriff's department, and certainly the allied health program that has all of the college's health programs there, which amounts to a large number. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And Bill, I'm glad you brought up the ag center. Other speakers? Brett, come up and identify yourself, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brett Cothran. I am a business owner here in Wilkesboro, a property owner. I'm one of the shareholders of One Corporate Center. It's the first building on the right on Executive Drive. And I'm also a board director for the Wilkes Economic Development Corporation. I'll just make my comments real short. Looking back at the history of this county, you know, we've had mistakes made, and there has been decisions that were correct for the future of this county. Oakwoods Road, I would argue, is the most desirable entrance into both downtown areas, not only Wilkesboro but North Wilkesboro. We want the entrance to be welcoming and easy access into both downtown areas. I don't believe four roundabouts does that. Looking at this proposed design, is this what we want our thoroughfare from 421 to downtown to be? I don't think so. So I urge the town council and others, don't make a mistake for future generations. Thank you.
So do we have it?
My name is Jim Smoke. I also represent the Community College Endowment. We used to be called the Foundation. We own the acreage adjoining the allied health services building. Our sole mission is to support the college. If you think back a few years, this whole site, the four buildings, all the acreage, it was empty. It was a terrible waste of economic resources. And through a collaboration of public and private interests, the college, the county, and others, we were able to take that property and turn it into something productive. And it still has productive capacity for the future. My concern is this plan is going to set us back. We need sites like this in Wilkes County. It's very important. And what you're talking about with restricted left turns, the too many roundabouts, that's a problem. You're hurting the economy of this county, this town. We don't need any more economic challenges in Wilkes County. We've got plenty of them right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other speakers?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Craig Langston. I am a new resident and a new business owner in town. I am a financial advisor at Edward Jones, also just a low lieutenant of one corporate building. But we've been here three years now, and I recently came from Hickory. I love, our family loves Wilkes County. We love the, the opportunities that are here. We don't, I don't think there are traffic issues on Oakwoods Road. I don't think, having lived in Charlotte, having lived in Hickory, that we have any issues. As a financial advisor, my job is to do what's in the best interest of my clients. And I don't think that more roundabouts, more hindrances in our town are what are in the best interest of our residents and new residents, prospective residents. So I would like to just ask for us to think better about ways that we can make changes, and not make changes for the sake of change, but make changes that are going to be in the best interest of our, of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Jeff? Craig, thank you for those comments.
Jeff Cox, the president of the Community College, so appreciate you guys coming up and going, going over this for us. I just echo the comments you've heard from the Community College trustees and our foundation board members. I think our primary interest is certainly that left turn coming off 421. That's the, that's the biggest impact for us with students coming to and from our facility over there. I feel like that's going to be an unnecessary hindrance. I'm thinking if, you know, I've tried to be open-minded and think, or we, you know, we're solving a problem that's 10 years out maybe with heavier traffic, and so it's hard to predict. I know that's not perfect science, but I think right now where it exists, we're not seeing a travel over there a fair amount. And I don't ever really have to wait more than a few seconds to make that left turn into there. So we, we would certainly appreciate you taking in this feedback and making whatever adjustments make sense. The key back says there on Executive Drive is a smooth flow as it can be. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to ask our EDC president if she has any thoughts that she would like to share with the group. Not to put you on the hot seat, but since you're in the audience, I think your voice needs to be heard.
Well, I wasn't aware of all the details until we've seen the presentation tonight, so I haven't had a lot of time to think about the, the changes other than, I do travel that way. That's the way that I come in when I come to town, and I've been on 421. And my thought, when I looked at the map, is that even coming from Charlotte, Cabarrus, Concord area recently, I don't know of anywhere there's four roundabouts that close together. I like roundabouts because you continue to move and flow with traffic, but that does seem excessive coming into town through that area. I do appreciate the fact that we are looking ahead to the future and thinking about the appearance of our entrance into town. I think that's one of the very appropriate ways to send out-of-town guests into our gateway of our towns. And I frequently recommend that direction because it is such a beautiful area. So I would think that it's very important that we make the right decisions at this point for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment tonight? Going once, going twice? Okay, I, I think you've heard some very positive comments tonight, and I'll kind of end it like this. I concur with the speakers who have said this is the most efficient gateway into the boroughs, Wilkesboro and North Wilkesboro, and by far it's the most eye-appalling entrance. And I'm going back to what Councilman Hayes said, I'm glad to hear you say that you're going to lessen the impact of the curves. My hopes would be that they could be even lessened a whole lot more because I, I do think that we want to get as much, the town council wants to get as much of the truck traffic as we can off of Main Street. And I think we have put in place the image that we have narrowed the two-way traffic down as far as the lanes by doing what I call a mini bulb out, and it does give you that perception. The last thing I want to have happen is to have more tractor trailers, logging trucks coming through Wilkesboro. But I do want them to have a gateway into Wilkesboro from Oakwoods Road. And, and quite honestly, I don't think anyone on this board, before we heard the public comments tonight, think that this is the right approach to take. Now, I know in dollars and cents, this probably is the best option, but I, I don't, I don't think that we need to look at it from only a dollars and cents investment. It's got to be a practical approach that is inviting and welcoming. And I think that's been the overwhelming opinion that I have heard tonight, that what could be created is going to be a deterrent to achieve the objectives that you've heard tonight, and hopefully what you've just heard me say. And I think I speak for the voice of the board with the comments I've just shared with you. I will say this in closing. I appreciate the two of you coming before us tonight. I think everyone handled themselves in a diplomatic manner. I want to thank each one of you for doing that. So take to heart what you have heard tonight. And like you said, there'll be a second public hearing, and with that time period, you'll incorporate all the comments you've heard tonight. And hopefully then, as this evolves, some modifications can take place that will benefit everyone that has had a reasonable doubt. So thank you, Mike. Thank you, Remi. And we wait forward to hearing the announced date for the second public hearing. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And then I'll say this to the audience, anyone that would like to leave at this time, if you will have an orderly exit, we're going to carry on with the balance of our agenda. But thank you to each and every one of you for coming out tonight and letting your voice And their mass exit. Yeah, well, it is hard to wait, so. All right. Yeah, well, it is hard to wait. So, all right. I'll wait this second longer. Jesus Christ. Back to normal now. Okay, at this time, we will now move on to item number eight on our agenda tonight. I'm going to call for Aaron to come before us. And Aaron, if you will, just move the mic close to you so you can be heard. And the item on, item number eight is a five-year update to our water supply plan. And I think this is mandated by the state. So, Aaron, you have the floor. Just be relaxed. You're among good people that...
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be presenting the five-year update to the local water supply plan. The local water supply plan is actually updated every year, contains information regarding our water distribution system, and also our drought management plan. Every five years, there's a resolution that you will look at, and hopefully if you pass that, we will, we will send the water supply plan back to the Division of Water Quality, and they will accept it. I'll just go over some of the points. And then, of course, if anyone has any questions, feel free to, to interrupt me, and I'll try to answer the best I can. So, here are, number one, system information. This usually, this mainly just goes over the tops of the water lines that we have in our distribution system. It lets you know how many feet of water line were replaced in 2017, and also how many water meters were replaced. It lists an estimated percent of the type of water line that we have in our distribution system. And as time progresses, we take away most of the, the cast iron and galvanized pipe. That, that number decreases every year, something that we work towards.
Are those the ones that are most problematic to fail over time?
Yes, yes. Those are lines that have been in the ground the longest. And just because of the type of pipe, they, they tend to fail more frequently.
But if, if, if the council looks at the percentage of lines, it looks like the accepted type of pipe that we're using out now is ductile. And obviously, it has a longer life, and it's more sustainable.
Yes, correct.
So that's what you're going to?
Yeah, and I'd just add, Your Honor, that's been the town's policy for a generation now. And that's, and so we actually, if you look at this sheet, it's probably flipped as compared to a lot of communities, since the majority of their pipes is PVC now that they're going to. But we have held to, to the ductiles what we have for our expectations for water.
Well, and too, Ken, to your point, and I commend you in helping lead this board in that direction. We've been very aggressive in replacing these obsolete pipes with ductile. And we're way out in front of where many municipalities find themselves now, where they've waited too long and those lines have failed.
Yes, most of the PVC line that is listed is a pull pipe that is used for directional bores, and also the small two-inch line that is just inconvenient to use ductile for something that's small. Moving forward, number two, water use information. This gives the number of metered connections that the town has, and then breaks those down into the types of use, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, or institutional. The numbers here are the average day in million gallons per day over the entire year. Below these, you'll see water sales. And this lists Broadway, Arabian Falls, and West Wilkes Water Associations. And it lists the average million gallons per day that we send to those. Of course, Broadway is very small, and it's, the, most of that usage is just when they clear the lines and remove the, the stagnant water.
So let me ask a question, if I might. On the types of use, we've got institutional, and we have two of those. And can you, you told me during our work session where those two were? Would you refresh my memory? I didn't make a note of them.
Well, I'll let Aaron clarify. Those, those two that are shown as unmetered, our town unmetored sites, and I believe there are probably one at the water and one at the sewer, but I don't, no, I'll defer.
Actually, one is the police department, and the other is the Public Works Building.
Okay.
Is there a reason why they're still unmetered?
Well, we need to get what meters on those. It's just, it falls low on priority list.
I understand.
Yeah. Cause of non-revenue.
Okay. Continue, please.
Thank you. Moving down, water supply sources. This is a list of, this lists all the water supply sources. Of course, in Wilkesboro, we only have the Yakin River. This chart shows the amounts of water that we pumped from the river in 2017. It's all the monthly withdrawals. It shows the average daily use, and also the maximum daily use. Moving down, we have some wastewater information. These are the average daily amounts of water that are discharged back into the river each month.
Was there a reason why it's such a dip in July? Just curious. It looks awfully different.
Really, I'm not familiar with the wastewater. I can't answer that one for you.
So I think the chart gives the appearance of a greater dip than it really is. So if you'll, those two peaks, the A is 4.6, then it drops 3.99, then 3.2, then back to 3.6. So it's just a, I think it's the curve that looks a little deceiving of that map.
So let me, not to put you on the spot, but let me ask this question. The wastewater, the average daily discharge, a lot of that, or some of it, could be the stormwater runoff from parking lots, Tyson's paved surface around the building. So that's taking into consideration into this number, in addition to what we process through the sewer lines. Correct. Okay. Do we have a, a point that differentiates from the total, the difference between what we process that we pull in from the sewer lines compared to the stormwater runoff?
We don't. So there's two issues there, Your Honor. You have a lot of what's called inflow and infiltration, which is water that just gets in through wore-out pipes, or, or gutters that may be hooked to our system that shouldn't be. And then, and then we do drain one significant area, which is that Tyson parking lot area, about a 13 area, our 13-acre area of asphalt that, that we treat. We've got formulas that can tell you about how much water that is, if it's in terrain, how much that is. But, but we haven't tracked it based on the revenue. It all goes into the same metering system and goes back out. We treat that water just like any other water, and then send it back to the river. Which is probably a good thing. I mean, the, that big parking lot, a lot of industrial activity going on there. You know, you've got some oils, some food products that get underground and so forth. And that's, I think, is one of the reasons why we did that, is really to protect our waterways around and just treat that water.
Good. Thank you for your answer. Go ahead.
All right.
Ask a question. I, I, I don't, I doubt you'll have the answer to this. It says sewer connections, this system's 1759. That's a lot less than the water connections, isn't it?
Well, you take into consideration, there's 66 irrigation meters. Of course, they're not tied back in.
This, this seems to me we have as many sewer connections as we do water connections. Water connections were over 3,000.
Well, they were actually, I think, closer to 1,800 metered connections.
Meters?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Oh, that was the population?
Yes, the 3,500 was the population. That was just gathered from the last census.
Okay. Okay. So it's closer than I thought. Good. Thank you.
Moving on to number five, planning. These are just estimated projections for the demands of water that may happen in the future. This information is gathered mainly from just past supply plans and just the growth that has been shown over time.
So let me stop and go back to the top of page four or five. And that's under the permitted capacity, and that's 4.9 million. And then the design capacity is 4.9. But the average annual daily discharge is 3.998. And that equates to basically 60% of the capacity of, of 4.9. And I think I've asked this question in our work session, but I think it's only worthy to ask it again. Would we be put on notice by the state if we reach 80% of the maximum?
Yes, Your Honor. And actually, that, that number shows you pretty much reached it. The 3.9 out of 4.9, that's about 80%. Four out of five. So I don't think we've exactly hit it yet. Sam may be more to, to, to discuss that as our utility director. But that is why we, I mentioned to council this morning, that we will be taking steps to, to, to review the system once the clarifier is, the new clarifier is put into service through an analysis of the plant to determine what our next steps are. Because we know we are running out of loading capacity and, and coming close to the hydraulic capacity of the plant.
And do we have room on our current site for a planned expansion?
We do, Your Honor.
Okay.
We just don't know the best way to expand it yet. There's different technologies out there. We have a kind of a tried and true technology is what we're doing, but it's, it's more old school, I guess. And there's other ways out there now that we'll be exploring as well.
And for those that'll be viewing this on River Street Network, I lost my train of thought. Hold on a second. Let's see if I can recapture. Tell the audience what the clarifier, the new clarifier will do for the town.
I think I'd have to defer to Sam Carr on that to be a better explanation.
Sam, would you step up to the mic, please? Not to put you on the hot seat, but I think that's worthy of an explanation.
Um, the new, the clarifier that is currently being constructed is an additional clarifier. We have three. That's where you settle your, your solids and discharge the clear water to the UV disinfection. It is a 100-foot diameter clarifier, and it gives us 33, or about 36% increased wear capacity. And would, will be, when completed, it will be one of the steps that you would need to take to, to upgrade the capacity. So we'll, we will already have that in place.
It will, it will also allow us to take others out of service and do necessary repair work on those.
Yeah. Currently, if we have to take one out of service, it really puts us in a, in a pinch to try to use the two clarifiers from the three. So this is going to be the fourth.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Also, when you look at the averages, especially for the monthly draws for the water treatment plant, those averages are a little low because we factor in the entire week. But of course, Monday through Friday, when Tyson's operating, those numbers are a lot higher than on Saturday and Sunday. So those two days kind of pull down the average.
But it's all based on a seven-day average, regardless?
It is. But like you said, we have to pay attention to those peak days.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. I guess my question would be, since we are to expand our water capacity in the next several years, and we would look for one or perhaps two big water users to create many jobs, how long would it take to catch up on the wastewater side so that we could accommodate those big water users?
Yeah. So today, I don't know that we could handle a significantly large water user on the wastewater side. We still have some growth room on the water plant side for some usage, although that might speed up our, our improvement plan of the water if we had somebody come in sooner. But on the sewer side, you know, we do not have a lot of room. That's why we're, we're taking steps to, to prepare us for that next expansion. I would say it's, you know, we, it's about a three-year window to get this thing designed, built, and in operation. And so this spring, after you get your clarifier in place, we will, we expect to, in the budget process, bring back a proposal to the town council to authorize what's called a headworks analysis on the facility, kind of tell us what we have, how it operates, where the weak points of the plant are, and, and then help us make the determination as to, to turn right over into, to develop a preliminary engineering report on, on the improvements to the plant at different capacity ranges. You know, you don't want to plant too big, but you don't want to be expanding the plant every five years. So we'll have to take into account, you know, what conditions we think are out there. And we've got, you know, just down the road, a company that we have to take care of. And, and we work real hard just to, just to keep up with them. And so that's why we're really kind of staff-wise is, is bringing something back to you. Because we feel that if growth continues at, at Tyson Farms, that we will need to do an expansion sooner than later for that waste treatment plant.
Well, and too, if the EDC brings a wet user, that's going to just expedite the urgency of urgency.
It is. So the clarifier that's going in place, as, as Sam had noted, it, it does a couple of things for us. It, it eases the, the operations at the plant by having another facility, another clarifier to, to go with the ones we have, which allows you to take, take the others out and service them as needed. But it's also an important piece to the next plan expansion. So it will save you dollars down the road, because that would have hadn't been done either way. So you've actually started your expansion process by putting that in.
Is it like the water improvement? You don't want to have it so big you're not using enough of it?
That's right. There's a sweet spot at that facility. There's a sweet spot at that facility, just like there is at the water plant, and you want to kind of find it and give yourself some room to grow into it. But you don't want a plant that's sitting there running twenty-five, thirty percent. It doesn't run well that way.
You all have the efficiency that you gain otherwise. Okay, we'll get an answer. All right, Aaron, go ahead.
Moving down to appendix A, there's a map. This is a map supplied by North Carolina Division of Water Quality. It just shows our location being in the Yakin PD basin, which that basin is separated into four sub-basins and we are sub-basin eighteen dash one.
Basically, all that is inside Wilkes County, right?
Appendix B, we move on to the Water Shortage Response Plan. This is actually the most important part of the water supply plan in itself. I know it's hard to think about drought with the amount of rain we've had lately, but it's good to have for any future problems we may have. The number one, Water Shortage Response Plan Procedure. When the benchmarks established in section four of this plan are reached, the town manager or agent designated by the town manager shall declare a water shortage and enact the provisions of this plan. So that will be the procedure. Number two, our year-round water conservation policy. Our policy, we just encourage all municipal supplied water users to make efficient and responsible use of the water at all times. We have the water classifications on number three. They're broken down into three types. Class one is essential potable water uses. Class two will be important potable water uses and class three would be considered non-essential. And of course, in, in there, it kind of gives more detail of how those are classified. Number four, the Water Supply Shortage Stages and Water Use Reduction Measures and Responses. This chart, it lists the stages of, let's see, the waters, water shortage supply, specific triggers used to warrant a conservation stage and specific potable water reduction goals for the stages. So we have voluntary stage one, mandatory stage two A, mandatory stage two B, and emergency stage three. And on some of the following pages, it lists these stages and then goes into more detail on what steps will be taken if the town has ever, ever reaches any of these stages. On the chart, under system status, you'll see potable water reduction goal. These goals, as you go underneath the voluntary stages, that's the percent reduction in water demand that we'd like to see as we reach each stage. And then we have the system demand, the US drought monitor, the W. Kerscott reservoir level, and the Yakin River flow. As any of these problems arise, we would go into a voluntary stage one. And then after that, any two of these that are, that happen within the stage will move us up to a mandatory stage A or any of the following. So for example, if the US drought monitor lists as, goes from severe to extreme, and then also the, the lake reservoir level was to drop below one thousand twenty-three feet, then we would move from a stage one to a mandatory stage two A and so forth. Moving to number four, the Town of Wilkesboro Enforcement Penalties. These are just the penalties that we would issue if anyone were to about violate the, any of the stages. The finance director will be responsible for any enforcement of these. Variance Protocols. We recognize that as we, if we institute any of the stages, of course, there may be someone that is affected more than others and this gives them an opportunity to come forth and plead their case and they may be able to lessen their, lessen what is brought on to them. A decision by the town manager to approve or deny a variance request will be based upon consideration of criteria, criteria including, but not limited to the impact that it will bring upon them. And of course, the return to normal operating conditions, that will be decided by the utility director and/or the town manager when to lift the. The effectiveness of the town of Wilkesboro's Water Shortage Response Plan will be evaluated by measuring system-wide water use reduction against historical data and other variables that could impact water use. Public comment and revision. The Town of Wilkesboro Water Shortage Response Plan will be reviewed and updated on an as-needed basis, but no more than five years from the date the plan is adopted by the town council. Public comments will be considered before the plan is adopted or any revisions are made.
Okay. At this time, I will ask those in the audience, Terry, Ed, Marty, if any of the three of you have a question or public comment.
Terry Bumgarner, resident.
Will you come before the mic so we can get your, what you have to say on record?
Terry Bumgarner, resident of Wilkesboro, Your Honor and councilman. I've stayed, I was not here for the water plan primarily, but I stayed. But my only comment is, you've got all this screen and I've got reasonable eyesight and I couldn't read one word of his report. Aaron, if it could be blown up on that for those in the audience that are not privileged to have their own book. That's my only comment. Proud to be here. Thank you for the job you're doing.
Thank you for staying the course tonight.
Apologies for the small print. It can be reviewed on, I believe it's the North Carolina Division of Water Quality website. All of the plans from our municipality and all the municipalities surrounding us, you can go online and look those up and they have those listed there.
I, it occurs, pardon. It occurs to me that, that these percentages work for a small town, although we have unordinary circumstances. We have one big water user. If we are able to expand in the future, let's say we double the capacity of our water supply and we roughly double the capacity of our wastewater treatment, do these same percentages still hold true?
And which percentages would you be kind of referring to, sir?
Well, the eighty percent rule applying for conservation in times of.
So those are locally developed. We've, we've made those decisions here locally. Now, we, I think we did this somewhat in concert with our neighbor, North Wilkesboro, have some similar, do we have similar regulations in place? No, okay, all right. But anyway, it is something that we can make ourselves. The only thing is, is that the state has to prove what you submit. So it has to be, it has to be teed in. You can't just put something in there minimal and expect it to fly down a rally. So I would say that these guys have worked hard with the percentages to make sure that we hit them at the right mark. Since we've had this water supply plan updated several years ago, I think we've instituted the voluntary stage once and, and held that for some time during a recent drought event a few years ago, but that's all that. But you do get to adjust it based on our needs, just like these triggers. Triggers are really more for us and we had to make those determinations.
Aaron, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right.
Your Honor, before we move on, there is a resolution that needs to be adopted this evening.
Yes, that's where I'm getting ready to go to.
Sorry about that.
The last page of this item on the agenda does have our local water supply resolution. It's two thousand nineteen dash oh four. And at this time, I will ask the council if there's any questions based upon the language of this resolution before I call the question for a motion to approve. Any questions on the language? Okay. In the absence of which, at this time, the chair will receive a, a motion from the floor.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution as it stands.
Okay. And I assume there'll be no further discussion in the absence of which, all those in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye, like sound opposed. All right. I think that, I don't think we have any committee reports unless someone would just like to bring one forth. Okay. Well, how about other business? Ken, do you have any other business to bring?
I do not, Your Honor.
All right, Sam, do you have any? Tommy? All right. Public comments? Ed, you have anything you'd like to bring before us or Marty? All right. We don't have a closed session tonight, or we do?
No, sir.
All right, then at this time, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, like sound opposed. All right, I thought we did a great job tonight and I think the force of the public was hurled. I think DOC took it.